We're coming to our first town hall and it's a little bit smaller just because of the room size. So you can only grow as big as our fishbowl, which is this room.
Alright.
But I appreciate it coming because we really wanna see, at least from a good sampling of the membership, where we can go from here. And as I mentioned, and some of you know and some of you don't, the purpose of this is really to get to a point where we can learn from each one of you on what the district needs. Because each member is very important to us and this is something that hasn't been done across the world. It's something new and I'm hoping that it works because everyone's working on figuring out that magic pill that will retain all of our members. So we wanna make sure to pay quick, close attention to that, so ask the hard questions. You know, there's a book on marriage or before you get married on the questions that you need to ask and it's actually called The Hard Questions. And so I think of Toastmasters much like a marriage.
I did read that one.
I ask my husband a lot of that. But it's a good idea that we get these tough questions, so ask as hard questions as you can. And hopefully we'll have the answers, we may or may not, but we wanna be open and sincere about everything and transparent so that we can figure out what's going on in our district specifically so we can be better and move towards excellence. So that's all I have to say and then I'd like to introduce although he won't be on camera, our moderator is Steve Haneman.
Hey, Karan.
DTM.
Charles.
Hi, hi.
Just, so this is being recorded, so just to make sure everybody knows who you are and positions in the district for new members that might see this, if Charles could introduce yourself and Kyle, go ahead.
Okay. Aloha everyone out there, District 49. My name is Charles Malik Jr., I am the District Director. My home club is Kamehameha and I'm very happy and excited to be here and to see everyone out there. And I'd like to introduce my club growth director, Kalani Shioke.
So as you said, I'm the club growth director, my name's Kalani Shioke. My home club is also Kamehameha and I'm very proud to be here, it's the very first time I've been on camera like this. New experience for me.
I'll do this every day.
And then I'm Karan Ralv, I'm also, my home club is not Kamehameha, it is Lily O'Kolani, it is Lily O'Kolani Toastmasters and I feel very honored and privileged to be assisting you in the coming years.
Okay, we'll get started. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Steve Haneman, DTM here in the district. I've held positions up to area director and lots of club officer positions, been in Toastmasters about seven years and also teach business at White Pacific University. This is gonna be fun. It is intended to be formatted similar to what you've seen on the town hall meetings on TV. However, this is not a contentious meeting. The idea was brought forward to promote transparency in the district and open lanes of communication between the members and the top three leadership. So this is all about that. We will be asking some hard questions. They're not to trip anybody up, remember, this is not questions to make anybody look bad or to criticize, it's to bring up areas of concern. I have a list of questions that I've compiled off of Facebook postings, conversations, and emails over the last six months or so. Everybody that is online or that wants to is also welcome to ask questions. I, for those, for a bigger group, I have index cards and the format for future ones that will do, well, everybody will have index cards and can pass them forward to the moderator if they wanna remain anonymous but still ask a very hard question. So if anybody would like index cards, feel free and I'll read them without identifying who submitted them. But I think this forum is designed to be honest and open and if you hear a question from me or anybody else that hurts your feelings, that is not the intent. We are just here to talk about everything and figure out how to make the district better like Karan alluded to. So let's start off, right off the bat, with a question that has come up that is a hard question for Charles.
Okay.
Members have noticed that most of the district communication comes from the training office, education and training, Karan, and not so much from marketing either. And we have seen very little from you. What do you see the role of the district director now and for next year? And how can you participate maybe in showing more of a vision for the members so they have a common goal to latch on to?
Thank you, Steve, that's a great question. From my perspective, the lead of the district director is there to, yes, to lead the district, but the district director is there to support the role of the program quality director and the new club growth director. Not necessarily to be the person who is disseminating all the information, but is the person who oversees the district. That's what I see the role as a district director. Now, one of the challenges that we faced this year was that our public relations officer was going through a difficult time with a family member's illness. And that had, I can see it, I saw it then, it kinda, it held us back in a lot of areas. Unfortunately, it happened, it's something that we couldn't help. And then we tried to replace that person with another public relations officer who wasn't as experienced, has the technical knowledge but not the, per se, the great PR knowledge. And she just came on for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, so to follow up on that, and the next question will be for Karan, so start thinking about your tabletop agenda.
Okay, I'm timing it.
It sounds like you view the role as administrative and support for the district, as a district director. Coming in from where you have been in the institution, training, Karan, how do you see your role? The same changing, if you were elected at the convention, obviously there's elections coming up, but should you be elected? Do you see that changing at all or continue more and how will you build the team that follows up with you?
Well, I always see my role as more of a supportive role. You know, I am in the front of everything just to be, to make sure that I know what's going on and then also to have the vision and hold the vision for the district. So whatever my role in the district is, I'm holding the vision for that specific role. So I do see it as changing a little bit because I've had to really gain a lot of the skills necessary to fulfill the role as district director. And so I'm at that point, I'd be assisting and supporting the key three, the other two members of my team. And my whole goal is to really build the core team, but then also the deck team and then build it as more of a cooperative society culture within our community. So that's my goal is to do that and in order to do that, we need to reach the member at their heart. And so there's just a lot of things that go into that, but my role is really to ultimately hold up the other two so that they can hold up our deck team and then we can hold up a member. Because the member to me is the most important.
Okay. Of course, I believe you said, you're doing well on the timing. Kyle?
So my role as club growth director, it's not as forefront as I wanna say the district director role. My role, I've always seen as being behind the scenes, because as you asked the question, I've been going through my mind previous years, going back to when I was first area director and how communication style was done by those previous district governors and all of their, but basically everyone who became a district governor ever since I started getting active in the district. The pattern that we've been following for the district communication has been more like a corporate waterfall where we believe that the communication should go through division directors, down through area directors and then through the club officers that way. We have not normally made wide announcements to the members directly. That could be changed in the future, but it's just not our current practice. Even though we do have a district director's message on the district website and on our social media sites, that we don't, or at least we haven't in the past gone through direct mail very much to the member directly.
Okay.
That's, that kind of, that's my answer for our communication style. As far as what we perceive our role to be, the club growth director role, it's not as forefront as the, as the other two roles. I don't see that really changing.
Okay. Next year, you'll be the new Karan. Any changes happening there?
And as far as how we communicate or as what kind of activities we have planned for the district? Are you still, this is still about communication style?
It's actually now moving into Karan's role, we're looking at next year. What can we anticipate for next year as far as the training and the whole development issue related to officer training, communication tracks?
We haven't developed the group, the exact plan yet. We do wanna have, we wanna incorporate the feedback we receive from this past cycle of training, specifically the ones that came in January and February. We can't promise that it'll be exactly the same as it was before, but we will have to adapt and provide ways for club officers who cannot attend the full TLI. We just haven't decided how that will be done and what level of training will be required for anything done outside of the TLI environment, actually.
The sponsored training, that brings up a good question because there have been actually quite a bit of traffic on the internet emails everywhere about the training and accessibility. Lots of good comments about the quality of the training, the courses selected, and also some not so good comments about if we couldn't come, that's not fair 'cause we can't get DCV points 'cause we couldn't get the training. Understanding that we have a geographically separated district here, we've got people on other islands, would you be willing, any of the panel, to consider Skype trip training? Where it's a webinar, where the other islands could participate or even record them, for people who couldn't. Pretty big.
We, we have thought about that greatly at the beginning of the year. But however, the Toastmasters procedures are to be a face-to-face training, although we are moving into that arena. So that's one of the things that we're hoping, that I'm hoping that will, that will materialize with the new educational program, that we will, that we will be able to train on Skype or FaceTime or, you know, things in that venue. So that's one of the things that I'm hoping to see in the future and I hope that it does come soon. 'Cause yes, it is, for our district, when we go up to the district trainings, the problems that they have is that they have to drive. But they see our problem as a much larger problem because we actually have to, for some cases, get on an airplane and go to a specific location to get, to receive our training. So hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to train virtually.
So right now, in order to train the other island club officers, somebody from the district flies over, provides training?
No, that's, that's not how it currently is because we have an area director at the moment. You know, 'cause they are able to train them. But one of the things that I had done as, sorry, I was gonna go lieutenant governor, but you know, as a program quality director, was that I, I asked if we could have at least three clubs that are represented. Because in the manual for training club leaders, it specifically says that it's not an efficient use of district resources to go out individually to train the clubs. And I look at it as, I don't know if I'm gonna use the right word, but I don't wanna get people used to that where we go out because the real value is coming to the district training. You get to network with other officers, learn from them. That's actually been the number one thing that officers say that they found beneficial was that one part, well, there are several parts of it, when they go in for their role and their problem solving and they're communicating with our fellow officers that have the same role in the district. And as far as your question about the Skype, I mean, we are definitely for it, like as a, as a key three. One of the limitations is that Toastmasters International is not currently. However, we actually got one of the islands approved for it, but then one of the past division directors said that he would train them, you know, and so he does it in a pretty good job, so we would, we let him in that case. But in the future, maybe what we could do is be proactive and do what Charles did this last time and go to TI and ask for that from each, for each of the islands. Because it has to be approved per island and that's unfortunate. But the other thing that I wanted to mention too is that internationally, they actually have to travel more. They have to go further as far as plane rides to be able to get the training. And drones of people go to places in India and Europe and I get it's a different culture. It's a very different culture than we have here. But I find that just interesting as sort of a social experiment that we're not able to here, but they do it over there. But I get it because we are a lot of like very, very fast-paced society and I personally too would prefer that it's, you know, on my island if possible or it's convenient. So I, I understand at the same time.
Okay. Transparency, we're gonna stick on district leadership. The budget, that comes up once a year at the convention and is basically rushed through to be approved.
Right.
And there isn't really any transparency at all to that budget. We've heard very strange statements like it's not real, we make things up for Toastmasters International, it's none of your business. Do you really think that the budget for a nonprofit organization should be secret?
No, I'm interested.
Okay.
Well, we are a budget guy, I was pretty.
He's building their budgets.
Let's hear from Charles, let's hear from Charles first and then Kyle.
Okay, okay.
You can hear from me too if you want.
Well, the budget is a very difficult thing. You know, coming in, coming on board and even as a brand-new Toastmaster and not even being on the, at the district officer level when we went to the business meetings. Like the budget, you know, like what is all of these numbers and, you know, it's hard to, to decipher. It's like a foreign language to some of us. So when you have it at the, the business meeting, the members actually don't, possibly don't realize how much work and hours that we put into the budget. And if you was to look at the budget, you could see, you know, we have limited resources. So sometimes we have to direct the budget in certain areas. And for Toastmasters, that the budget is for the travel of the key three to the district, to the international convention in August and also at the mid-year of training. So that's one of, one of the items. And it's also for the area directors or division directors to go and visit the outer islands on correction, the neighbor islands. Nelson is not watching that.
Oh, no, he is though.
Yes, yes. So we are fortunate this year that our division director from Maui was able to visit twice, I believe so, correct? And our division director from the big island, Liz, had already visited the big island for officers training, club training, and she's gonna be doing a fact-finding mission to the big island soon. So that's all put in there. So that takes up, and that has to be less than thirty percent of the budget. And the other big part of the budget is the district conferences. Now, the district, uh, district conferences are geared that we just have to make break even.
Oh, I have to jump out. Yes. I think you can go from there. I'll come back to where he left off, but getting back to the question that they first asked about transparency about the budget. The process is when the P3 get elected in May, we have until August, or no wait, September thirtieth to submit our budget to Toastmasters International. Now, the thing is for anyone who's experienced with the preparing that budget before, that's a long time. But for me, when I came on, I didn't really learn about how to prepare that budget until about June with the official rules learning. I learned that at the convention itself and the training for district leaders back in August. And basically, the budget came together in late August, early September and we had to get it put together very quickly and then put it forward to Toastmasters International first for their approval and then for the district's approval at the November conference. Now, the reason you understand why it's so rushed, or at least it's not put up for debate, is that by the time it gets to the district conference in November, it's already been accepted by Toastmasters International in September. And there's really not that much we can do to change that budget once it's submitted and accepted by Toastmasters International. Now, getting back to why, why we can't or we could describe more about what goes into the budget. A lot of it is, we have rules that are not necessarily accounting rules, but rules set forth by Toastmasters International about what percentage of the budget can be spent on travel. As Charles mentioned, that's thirty percent. The amount that can be spent on education and training, the amount that can be spent on marketing, administration, and pretty much every facet of the organization. And if you want to know roughly what we spend things on, we are allowed to share the summary sheet of our budget, that one that gets presented to the business, during the business meeting to all the voting members of the district council. And the bottom line is it's about a twenty-four thousand dollar budget per year. If you think about all the members and how many payments you put into your dues every year, twenty-five percent of that gets allocated towards the district and that forms our district budget.
About what, six thousand?
Nine.
About nine dollars?
Nine dollars per cycle.
And, and as far as the business meeting goals and the, the budget, only the delegates, the presidents, the club presidents and vice presidents of the education, we are emailing that information. Of course, once they get it, they can disseminate it to their club members if they want to or they can, of course, hopefully give it to their representative who's gonna be there to, to vote on the, at the business meeting. So that is part of the reason why at this past business meeting, not everyone had a copy because by right, only those members, the presidents, club presidents and vice presidents of educations are able to receive that document.
Okay, so voting members, the ones who are voting on the budget, see the budget. Do you think that encourages transparency? I know one of the questions that came up, I don't have a clue who asked it, but it was a very good question in light of what's going on with our current Congress, that we see. What do you mean we're operating at a six thousand dollar negative cash flow? How do we sustain that? That question came up.
Yes.
Do you not think that the district membership should try and figure that out or do you even have an explanation?
Well, one, would you have to understand that we're not cash flow negative. We are budgeted to break even and every year, we've kept that butt break even plus or minus, I would say a thousand. But we are also, even though we're required to main, to be break even on a budgetary level, we're also maintained to keep a minimum balance in our account, which is several thousand dollars. So we're not allowed to go into that cushion for administrative reasons that have to do with transition between year to year. Every key three has to set aside certain amount for the next key three to spend in the beginning of the year. Now, the hard part about the way the budget is presented is that we present a budget number, an actual number, and then there's a third number that shows how different between budget and actual. And I think that six thousand dollar number is what, it looks like a negative cash flow, but it's actually just the difference between our actual and our budget number, if I'm recalling correctly.
So the district does follow GAAP, generally accepted kind of practices and shows transparency and a balanced budget revenue expenses?
It's simpler than true GAAP, but yeah.
I believe it, it was very, at the district conference with the question that you're referring to, it wasn't necessarily answered in a way that I think could have conveyed the true nature of what it really was. Like if I, I believe if I heard that answer and I was feeling like that person, then that would be acceptable to me versus I think you were saying that somebody had said, oh, we kind of just make the numbers what they are. Yeah.
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 I can't, I, and I understand the budget process and how complicated it is. If I could just offer a comment, perhaps a little transparency isn't about how you got the numbers, it's just, this is what the numbers represent and they will change based on whatever these factors are. I don't think it's unreasonable that the travel expenses at thirty percent cover the district officers to go to the conferences and to the mid-year training. But some members might not understand and might look at that travel budget and not realize what it is. Just, just so, maybe a little more explanation might clear up a lot of that and go towards your goal of transparency. Any of those little things that might cause conflict? Don't have any more, I'm not gonna talk about the budget anymore because we don't need to. Let's talk about deck meetings. Deck meetings are by charter closed to an invited that isn't a member of the district leadership or an invited guest, that's the description. Can't debate that issue, it's really, it's in writing, that's just the way it is. Is there any way to get the members to understand or know what happens at the deck meetings? Is there value to doing those? You meet monthly, correct?
Sometimes.
Quarterly.
It used to be monthly. Used to be monthly deck meetings and it was all of the area directors, area governors back then, division and top three. Any change? Is, is it now quarterly that the deck meets? And what is their function, I guess is the real question, just so everybody understands what this extra layer of...
So the deck is a district executive council which consists of the key three, the administration manager, the finance manager, the, the public relations manager as well as, as all of the four division directors and the sixteen area directors. And, and so they're the voting members of the deck. And then we have the non-voting members of the deck, which is the contest chair, the conference chair, the district partneritarian and district partneritarian mentor, the media, the media consultant and who else is on that team? I think that's about it, right?
For voting members of that?
For non-voting, just the whole entire.
Yeah, that's supposed to all forget.
So, so the deck meets, it was quarterly, but this year we had actually upped our meetings more frequently than we have ended there in the past. So this, this time around, this part, this last part of the year, we've been meeting almost every month except May because we have the conference, but we've been meeting every month, January, February, March, April, right?
Yeah, except for Christmas too.
Right, and then Christmas. So, because it is a home church. So what does the deck do? The deck members, the key three give our reports and then of course we disseminate what our vision is, what our goals is, what are the deadlines that Toastmasters has set down. A lot of the things that we do is already predetermined. We have a district leadership handbook and in the middle there is a calendar and Toastmasters has already mapped out our basic deadlines that we have. So we have to follow those. And then we get reports from the different divisions and areas and also the sponsors and mentors committee. And sometimes we might vote on, we can vote on if there is some type of conflict that came up and it was presented to the district, we might vote on that. Recently, this time around, Saturday, we voted for the District 49 Lifetime Achievement Award to implement that. So those are some of the things that we do. There are, there are also more things, but that's just a little example. Karan, is there anything that you might wanna add or?
We've been also working on things that could really help our area directors and our division directors to do their, their jobs because there's a lot of things that come up that they may not have been trained for. So it's almost like on-the-job training. So we've been working towards that and so through this process, we're all learning. You know, and I think at the last one, it was really interesting and I found very useful because, and we even had it at the international level when we're being trained as district officers, is parliamentary procedures because people rarely know what to do for that. And I have to say that there were so many things that I didn't know about and also things I learned the history for and why it's that way. And so I thought that was one of the most, I don't know how everyone else felt, but I thought it was one of the most beneficial meetings that we've had and I think we can only improve from there.
Yeah, yeah, yes. In fact, this year is one of the things that we've been trying to implement. Usually the meetings run an hour, which is very compact and that's one of the things I find out about a lot of Toastmasters going on is that sometimes our club meetings is one hour, so everything is tap, 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 tap. Oh, I gotta go, it's a lunch meeting, let's go. The conference is tap, 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 tap. So this year we made the, or the later part of the year, we made a deck meeting an hour and a half so we could add in the half an hour training that Karan still wanted us to do and it has worked out. I, I'm looking at the current deck members, so I believe the training has been, been helpful. So that's one of the other new things that we were trying to implement.
Hey, Charles?
Yes.
I can't hear you guys.
Oh.
I can see you really, but I can't hear any audio.
Oh, really?
Oh, okay.
You're coming through pretty loud.
Yeah, let me, maybe it's, maybe because, oh, maybe because...
Are you muted on the phone or the computer?
Okay, can you hear us now?
Hello?
Nope. Maybe it's because...
You can hear us say something.
Yeah, just silent here.
Um, does somebody, does somebody wanna start?
Um, does some- does somebody wanna start this camera? It's not recording either.
Yeah, I can, I can see.
Oh, it's not?
I think the card is full.
This is recording too, sorry, I have no release.
Okay, there goes, same here.
Okay.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna become a.
I'll just leave on this one, so we're good. That's why you have you Catherine. I mean, at least I'm recording here too, so on the the computer.
Yes.
Okay, uh the DECK training you brought up, uh just as a comment, I think that's a great idea. We need a lot of leadership training in the district. Um touching on the area of volunteers for district leadership positions. It's been getting, from the outside, it looks like it's getting harder and harder to find people to step up. To be area directors, division directors and even running for top three. Would you attribute that to them? Do you have any suggestions on what we can do to fix that?
Yeah, I'll I'll take that one then.
I I have my own version, but.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to hear Charles first, since he's district, yeah.
Okay, Charles, I think of first.
Well, I think in in today's society, you know, we have a lot of things, everyone here is busy. Some of us have one job, but most of us have two or maybe three and some of us have children or we have grandchildren. And we have activities, we have other, we have ballroom dancing, right? You know, we like to travel, so there is a lot of things that especially in the United States or the North America. We're a very busy society. So to ask someone to give up their time as we learn. As we learned over the weekend, but uh for a lot of people, they they don't want to give the time. That was one of the things with the officers' trainings, right, 'cause people didn't wanna come to Saturdays. Ladies and gentlemen, I work in an organization that I have to take off, I had to take off this Saturday. And that costs me a lot of money. 'Cause I can't make it up, I have to work overtime and use that for comp time for the district. So I don't wanna say how much money that I sacrificed every year, but I've sacrificed a lot to be a part even as an area director. But that was my commitment to the district. Karan has sacrificed a lot monetarily and Kaua as much. We have to take up those time, but anyway, that's another tangent. So that's one of the biggest things that I see is yes, we have leaders out there, they want to serve, they're passionate about Toastmasters. They wanna help the district, but because of that time commitment, a lot of for a lot of us, it's hard for us to do. The audience, can you tell me, has a time commitment stopped you from going to a Toastmasters function?
Absolutely.
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 More than once?
Yes, I would love to be there.
More than once.
It's about their obligations, absolutely, and to step up and take a leadership role.
So as far as. District Forty-Nine don't have talent? No, that's not correct. District Forty-Nine has a lot of untapped talent and leaders out there. We just have to go find them. We find them, we have to convince them to get a part, be a part of the team.
But my question was how?
How? How? How do we do that? Well.
I can then, oh, sorry.
I think we need to inspire them, we need to inspire them. Why should they become a leader? It's giving more of themselves. John F. Kennedy said, ask not what you can give to your country, but what you can do to your country, you know.
Toastmasters is good for you.
But anyways, I'm going off on a tangent, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but I always thought it goes to the value we provide, right? And I know I've said this saying about a million times this year, you need to touch your heart, you need to touch your heart in order to ask for a hand. And I got this quote when I had served on the board for Catholic Charities Hawaii. The chair at that time had said that to me and it has been so impactful and I have to say in every aspect of my life, that's what comes to mind. Is that we need to touch a heart and if there's nobody that's stepping up, then we have to go and find them. So I'm not sure if anyone has noticed, but I go to every every district event I'm there I'm at, I am letting people know what I see in them. And by seeing the leadership skills in each and every one of you, I see potential because for me, when I was asked to district leadership at the area level. I just thought to myself I was way too busy, I have too many things. But you'll find that if it matters to you, you'll make the time for it. And for me, I have a very busy schedule and there's actually people in this room I know have an even busier schedule or comparable schedule to me as well. And Toastmasters somehow touched their heart and so they've stepped into the leadership roles. So when I when I had decided to do that, some Ann Myers had actually said, this person stepped down because they're way too busy. And I was thinking in my head, oh my gosh, I'm way too busy, but then I was thinking about the next person she would ask. I was thinking, will that person be too busy for this too? And then I thought, what has Toastmasters done for me? Well, it's completely changed my life and I know that it's had an impact on all of our members because that's what keeps them here, plus the friendships. And then you think, what is it that everybody's getting out of it? Because everyone is here for their own personal reason. They have, they either wanna become a better public speaker, a better leader, a better mom, a better dad. There's so many different reasons that we could probably spend days talking about why people are in Toastmasters. But really, whatever that reason is, that's what we have to reach in and find so that they can see their full potential. Because somebody saw something in me, which I never saw, and then all the experience I've had, which has been tough. Because growth is painful, I know that I'm turning into like a hundred times a person that I would have ever been without somebody seeing something in me. And so when I go to all of these things, the speech contests, the district conference, I see so many leaders around me, I'm so excited. I don't know if you can, when I'm there and I'm talking to each and every one of you, if you see how joyful I am because I know that this experience is invaluable. And then once you're in it, you're gonna be so thankful, so excited that you've gone through district leadership. And I just hope that by planting seeds and growing and sowing those seeds, that we all do this together to make District Forty-Nine a better district. In fact, I hope that maybe a lot sooner than later, that we're an excellent district. And we have a long way to go, but we're gonna get there together. So that's, I don't know if that made any sense.
Made sense about two thirds of the way through.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's like, you know, it's my experience and I want that for other.
Anything to add to that Kyle about how we get people to volunteer for these leadership roles?
Okay, as she was she was talking, I was thinking back of uh my first year as uh area governor.
How'd they get you?
Yeah, how did I get roped into all of this? Because I'm pretty sure everyone in this room had a similar experience where Toastmasters benefited your life personally or professionally. And then you felt the the want, the desire to give back to the organization. Um above all, I think that's what's gonna drive most of our volunteers to take that step into into district leadership and the district uh volunteering within the district. But how do we know that someone has actually gotten something out of Toastmasters? That's the hard part for me that I've never quite, I mean, if someone comes out and tells you, I got this interview, I nailed this interview and I got the job. That's obviously someone we should reach out towards and I think we have in many cases. But how do you get to the ones that don't speak out about it? That's more tricky, I'm not sure how we can get there except through mass uh messaging or. Actually, actually what I think is most effective is seeing who comes out to district events and in general. And as as Karan mentioned, every person that comes out there, she's pre- pretty much, you know, been recruiting.
Yeah.
But e- even going further, we'd still need more because we, yeah, we do have sixteen areas and we need sixteen area directors each year, plus the division directors. So it's uh.
Oh.
It's uh. Still challenging, but if you're asking why you think we're not, I don't know, has it always been difficult? 'Cause I know when I was recruited, I was a late recruit.
Yeah, I was too. And then um actually, I think Elliot's year, we had an overabundance of people applying for the area director role. So that um nomination committee had to um select out those.
Okay, we need to figure out how that happened and duplicate it somehow.
Yeah, so that.
Now, we talked about the DECK a little bit. I'm gonna incorporate this into DECK. What is the district's channel for accepting feedback, comments, criticisms or ideas from the general membership? How do you, how do you deal with it? What is your communications? I'm sorry, I'm a project manager, but a communications plan is a tells who talks to who about what at any given point. So how do you, how do you get that input? So the DECK can discuss if something needs to be done in the district, does that make sense?
Yes.
If there's trouble brewing that's causing problems, how does the DECK find out and talk about it?
Okay. In practice, how it how it comes out is that a member would send an email or talk to a an area director or the a the division director and then they would bring it up to us. That that's usually, or sometimes our members, even though we don't um, we would not like to see this happen, sometimes our members come to us directly. You know, we would like them to come to their club presidents and if the club president can handle it at the club level, then you go up to the area. If the area governor uh director needs assistance, they can go up to the 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 division director. And if that time they um not sure what to do or they can't handle it, then they would bring it up to us. That's how I would like to see it, but it, sometimes it never happens like that. We're at the speech contest, someone will come up to me, hey, blah, 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 or you'll come up to Karan or Kyle. So that is the channels, to the club presidents, to the area, the divisions and then to the key three.
Is there any repository of suggestions or complaints, whatever you want to call them, ideas that the DECK actually discusses? Um and the reason I ask that is the model you pro- referred there was if there are issues in an area, you'll never hear about it if they follow your plan. So we don't know if other areas might have the same challenges. And that's that's kind of what I'm looking for is some some forward-looking, how do we collect this without it being turned into a pity party or a complaint board? Because the district transparency is really based on you being willing to listen and people feeling trust with, or they trust you enough that they can actually give you ideas without. Getting stopped down and yelled at and told to be quiet. I mean, that's harsh, but the two-way communication has to be open and clear. And then looking for something from the three of you on how we can do better in that area. What what do you, any thoughts Kyle? Can we do a blog, a a closed group? Something that the public doesn't see that where we can air the dirty laundry and have a discussion on it?
Well, ultimately, everything, we we will hear all the complaints eventually because it all percolates because it's a small island. But the the thing that most people probably don't understand, or at least they, most people who aren't in the three k- key three position don't understand is that the key three needs to make decisions as a group. Therefore, if there's a significant issue at the that needs to be discussed at the district level, it's not like you can come up to any one of us, except maybe Charles. And then expect an immediate answer. And understanding that, yeah, even Charles is gonna discuss uh big issues with the two of us as well before committing to anything significant. Uh if it's simply a a conflict, resolving interpersonal conflict, the way that Charles mentioned that how we would like things to um escalate. From club up to area through the chain, that's our preferred preferred way, we would like things to happen. If things cannot be resolved at the lowest level possible, that's when, there is a formal process that Toastmaster has for. I'm assuming this is mostly because uh when you're talking about complaints, you're talking about personal complaints and not organizational.
Uh not necessarily, let me open that up just a little bit more because it pertains to the education program standardization. Um I've I've got some questions here that I may or may not get to because we wanna start opening up to the rest of my field, I'm in right here shortly. But. A specific example I'll give you and maybe we can fit this in is on H P L requirements, high performance leadership.
Okay.
There are five specific projects that have to be done in an H P L. You have to give a speech, you have to do five projects, you have to have a guidance committee suggested for people. You have to give a final speech or it doesn't count. And that final speech has to be a written evaluation, that gets turned into Toastmasters, right? Some clubs are okay with you doing birthday party on H P L. Other clubs want, did you see documented meetings? Did you follow the book? Did you do all five projects? Did you do the self-evaluation matrix to establish your communication, to see how you fit? And I I brought up the H P L because it's key to developing leadership skills in our district and bringing up district leaders for area director and division. And then have the skills to resolve all these personal problems. Those H P L things, that question, how would something like that get resolved if you've got one area or division that says. Those guys are getting credit for birthday parties, I'm making mine follow the book, make them do it.
Yes.
How do we have a discussion at the DECK level to say, let's put out our vision or a white paper or something to say, these are the expectations. And this is what we want to follow in the district, 'cause we haven't really done any of that. How how could you implement it, or do you think that's worthwhile?
I think that's great, that's a great idea. Actually, Steve, that's one of my pet peeves is the H P L, the quality of the H P Ls because.
To me, that's the future of the district, is training leaders, helping the leaders.
I, yeah. Yes. Yeah, because I I know um. Personally for a fact that there has been some H P Ls that were gotten or received credit that did not follow the. What was in the manual?
Well, just to make it clear, I don't say there's a lot of people doing birthday party for H P L.
Yes, 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 we're not talking about, yes.
That was an extreme example, but it's within the realm of possibility of what's.
That's extreme. But the analogy was well taken. So yes, I agree with that, I think, or I believe that that needs to come up to the program quality director. Because that person is in charge of the education and training of the district. And of course. Her and her wisdom will probably consult with us. And then that would be, yes, hopefully I would like to see that implemented next year possibly, that is a great suggestion and then we could bring it on to the DECK. But yes, that is one of my pet peeves is the H P L. And I've and I've um directed a few uh people who have become D T Ms currently. And I did tell them that I'm sorry, I wouldn't accept that and they went ahead and they did another project. Uh not because it was a birthday party, but because it didn't fol- follow the protocol.
It it's all about developing leaders and not just getting a box check for D T M.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, they can answer that too. So what, there's actually been so many great ideas in the district and sometimes they're in the form of complaints where it's not constructive. Um and sometimes it's constructive, you know, and it's it's actually up up to us to kind of like see the value in what each person, whether it's like complaining. Or it's constructive feedback. And so there's so many ideas in the district, we'd have to focus on a few and I think that's a very important issue. Because with the H P L, the learning, which I think, there's a few core values that we have to live by with through Toastmasters or Toastmasters. And one of them is integrity. So if if they're not inte- you know, they're they're not having integrity with the H P L manual and what it says, they're actually robbing themselves of so many learning experiences. That could actually catapult them further in their careers, be a successful husband, wife, lots of different things that they're robbing some themselves up. So one of my solutions um is always, when there's a good idea and for the next year, I hope to be able to implement more strategic planning. And and hopefully the people following me, we can add on to each other or they could add on to whatever I've brought forward. And one of the things would be to start a committee, a pit, a committee of committed people, so that depends on who's there. But um people who really follow through and see it through and are passionate about that. Because and of course if the with district leadership involved, because that is something that is, I think, of value to all of the Toastmasters. Because if somebody sees somebody doing a birthday party, I know that's an extreme example, then they're gonna, they're not gonna find value in Toastmasters. 'Cause the value is in following the manual and getting the learning experience. And that's why every, I think I said at the officer's training, that it's the small moments, the micro moments, the small things that we do, that get to the bigger things. To get to the member engagement and the members' value. So I would I would start a committee that focuses strictly on that and possi- there's so many things I wanna do, but it's always, you know, the rea- reality of things is a little bit different. And so if I had somebody who's motivated about that, then I'd be like, oh my gosh, that's great, I'm so glad I found you, let's go this way. And then they would actually up their leadership skills too and actually they could do their H P L on that, which is ironic, so, yeah.
And and Karan brought up a a great point. We have a lot of great ideas that are brought up to us. But sometimes in reality, we only can implement a few of those. Sometimes it's it's uh manpower, you know, it's restricted, we don't have enough people or it's uh the leadership or sometimes it's budgetary constraints. And and as a leader, for me, that's one of the the hard le- lessons that I've learned. You know, yes, there's a lot of great ideas, we wanna do a lot of things, but unfortunately, reality, we can. You know, yes, there's a lot of great ideas. We wanna do a lot of things, but unfortunately, reality, we can instead of do ten, we can be do five or six.
Just one quick comment before the break then. Would it be feasible to have something on our District Forty-nine website as an HPL section? Whereas people give you ideas or thoughts or you wanna do something, don't have enough people, you just put up a short description, kind of like a help one on somebody somebody who needs an HPL project. We have this one. We can help you get to those committee members. Would you like contact? And just give some people examples of what real HPL projects are and do good things for the district. Like we know HPL doesn't have to be Toastmasters, but if you have projects and you definitely don't have people. I know we have people that need HPL projects that don't know what to do. Is that a reasonable, a possible thing you might consider?
That that is definitely why. I feel it's definitely possible. Um one thing that I believe it says in there is they prefer that it's not that it's outside of Toastmasters because then you can get the real like the real world experience from practical, you know, from the Toastmasters guidance. But of course, like selfish me, I definitely want it to be something new in Toastmasters. And they don't say it's wrong either.
Hmm? Yeah, it gives you the flexibility to do it either way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, it does. Uh I think that's a great suggestion.
Put put good examples out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's good.
Projects. Okay, let's take five minute break, get some water, restroom, whatever. And then we'll start up with questions from the others in the room here. Hope you've been writing some. Got some in mind?
Yeah.
Okay, six, ten was done ago.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all right, yeah. And so I'm going to ask that question and at the same time ask, what are your plans for future town halls and who might be invited to those? You know, frequency, relation, invite list, topics or format.
Yeah, well, I'm the only one qualified to answer that question.
Would you repeat the first question? Cause it wasn't recording. Repeat that please.
Who's invited to the town hall? How was that list decided upon? Will there be future ones? And who will be invited to those? And just talk about it. Is this a way to increase transparency in the district, do you think?
Yes, this is definitely a way to increase transparency. And how I because I was fully sorry, guys. I was fully like thinking of people who I could invite because I wasn't sure on the size of the room that I would get. And if I invited the entire district, my whole goal is to be able to invite the entire district. And I was assuming that all fourteen hundred members are not gonna be coming. But um but it would be like there would be a set amount of people in the next one, you know, and whoever signs up and how I selected them was from all different walks of Toastmasters life. Now, I can see in the room though, there's no beginning Toastmasters. And ideally, that's what I wanted to get to. So I I asked Maddy, who's responsible for the room, if you could attend, cause he's a beginning Toastmaster technically too. Um but actually, it's great because we only have besides the three of us, we only have two deck members. So that's really good. I didn't want it to be completely off the deck. And I wanted people who um I believe already are able to come up with hard questions that have spoken out, who have said things um to me personally or to one of the key three. Because I needed more vocal people, because I don't want people who are here, but then they're just participating as far as listening. I I need those tough, well, we all need those tough questions to be asked so that we could be better. And I knew that the group of people that I selected would definitely give us that on a smaller scale. And then I wanna open it up to really truly being a town hall for the districts.
So how often do you see this and will all the top three be participants?
Oh, my my whole vision, sorry. But poor guys, because I just said, hey, we're doing this town hall.
As part of the education and training plan, yes.
Yeah, it's just to increase, you know, awareness and stuff like that and just for our knowledge too. I originally had done it or I wanted to do it just for my area, but then I come to the realization it really should be for all areas. You know, the program training, the club growth, and the district director. And I do want it to be at least quarterly. I mean, if we can get it to that point, I think we'd be a healthy district. When I think about a healthy district, I think of one that is voicing their opinion, asking for things in a constructive manner though, not saying we demand this, but saying, could we work together to somehow get to this point? You know, and then not just say it, but also be like, you know, I want to participate in this. You know, it's it's one thing to say it and not follow through, but everything that I say, I put my actions through, you know, to what I'm capable of doing. Because as I had mentioned before, there's so many great ideas and then we can only do a few at a time. But it's like that starfish story. If you can just do at least one to two, you're already doing a great job. But of course, you wanna do excellent. So you gotta do them all, right?
Yes. Okay, and one more question on this follow-up and then we'll open it up to everybody else in the room. Along those same lines, getting input from all of the members, the new ones and area directors and everybody else to come to a town hall meeting where there's an open and frank discussion of what their concerns are without accusing, yelling, or just complaining, offering solutions. I think that's a very strong idea. I also think and have heard that the DTM's and long-term members of the district feel way underutilized. And I won't go to the point of not respecting, although that's come up on a very small scale. We're not tapping into a huge, huge resource of people with decades of experience in Toastmasters. We talked once before about possibly having a guidance committee that is a quarterly, meaning something separate from the deck where the top three might get together and have a coffee breakfast with all of the dis- DTM's in the district. Or anybody who's been in Toastmasters over ten years. Just invite them for a collective, okay, what are the old wise and experienced ones seeing that we should be paying attention to? Because you'll get vastly different response than you do from a branded Toastmaster.
Yes.
I like both of them in this format. I like that. But what do you think about, do you think we're using our experienced Toastmasters as well as we could and you have an idea for doing? Charles?
Well, of course, we're not utilizing them. But I think in my mind, one of the challenges is is a Toastmasters model where leaders are made. We are always looking for next year's leaders and the future leaders that we're looking for them to accomplish our goals instead of asking that these guys to help. You know, because it's all about the new leadership.
I'm referring more to a mentoring role, advisor, not an action officer.
Yes, a mentoring, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be a a good uh suggestion as well. Um.
Well, it's not about me making suggestions. I wanna know what you think or do you have an idea to use them?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
We can't let them just go away, anything.
Yeah. We we do. And actually, um I I have met with Greg Chang and Willie Jones, um just to talk about all of this. It's taken me a lot longer than I had intended because one of the things that I felt was very very valuable in some ways is to recognize people that that have accomplished something. Now, Willie Jones is our only world champion of public speaking in our district. And I'm hoping that one day that won't be the case. But as it is, one of the great things that we could do as far as PR, um just because that's what I do sort of for a living and my job is a lot of PR. And that's not my job, but it's a part of my job. And so one of we had come up with so many great ideas, but of course, like to implement them uh because there's a lot of things that are going on currently that we've had to shift our focus. But um I definitely wanted from here on out, be able to implement them. And some of the things that came up was being able to um have the international speech winner, our district champion, along with Willie Jones, be able to promote them at the forefront, like judge pageants, judge speech contests, you know, there's so many community events. And then open it up actually to our more seasoned members, to be able to go out in the community community because that's how you get people to at least hear what we are and then to become engaged. Because they're like, well, they're doing all of this stuff in the community that actually pertains to what they promote, which is where leaders are made. Um I've judged a speech contest because Joy Turperville, she's like, would you like to judge a speech contest for the Mar- at Mariner? You know, because they have um for I think like seventh graders or the younger generation. And how cool is it? Because it's a speech contest which relates to Toastmasters and yet you're also helping the younger generation to see the value in it. And so we want more of those things in the future. And then also to get to what we had discussed, um District Thirty-nine, which is Sacramento, they're really good friends of mine and also the key three. And so one of the things that they had brought up that they did is a leader breakfast. Because a lot of the things in Toastmasters that we promote is recognition. And you know, somebody served all that time and I can understand because oh my gosh, it is a different level of work and leadership at this level. And then just to be kind of like set aside, like, oh, they've done their thing and they're not really appreciated in the way that they would want. But we're we're not able to necessarily appreciate it in the way they want, but they should still be shown that respect and appreciation. So what they have is a leader breakfast, which is really exciting. And so they ha- come together, they talk about ideas and what they can do. And it's about re-engaging. Because a lot of our older members um have said they might be, not older, I don't mean that in like a
It's very, very serious.
It's a very serious members who have been in Toastmasters for quite some time. Um I would be considered an older member, I think. But um but I I just um I've seen them go through their course and then they feel that there's no value in Toastmasters anymore and are leaving the districts. And what I'd like to see is us to re-engage those members because they're just as important as the newer members. They're just important as the members who stay that are just in the middle of their Toastmasters career. Because every single stage is important. And like I had mentioned, it's all about the small things, the small moments, the small touches that we do for every member. So we're not doing our job as members, um even cause I'm a member, right? So I'm not doing my job necessarily if I don't make sure that every member is touched in some way.
Okay, so you do have some ideas and thoughts on bringing that couple in and all the experienced Toastmasters back into the fold and utilizing some of their their knowledge and what they've done. And that's good. Recognition is key.
Yeah.
E- everybody knows, everybody hears, heard Maslow's hierarchy means and recognition motivates.
Yes.
I mean, I'm opposed to two in Hawaii, but recognition is even more so. You did a good job. Let's start around with our roundtable questions.
Yay!
Right? Who would like to be first?
They're excited.
Let's go, let's go. Who would like to be first?
Uh I'll go, I'll go.
Okay, great.
You got like five questions.
Um yeah, well, I'll ask the interesting one first. Uh this might be more for Kyle because he's gonna be the new PQD. But um so I call TI, ultimately according to TI, it's up to the PQD to determine what is quality training when we're talking about TLI. And so my question is, if the district mission is to build new clubs and support all clubs in achieving excellence, how does not allowing an approved deck member do officer training support clubs in achieving excellence?
At the club level?
Yes, yes, at the club level. Yeah.
Okay. Just wondering.
Well, I believe, yeah, if training can be done by a deck member, current or past, it can you know, it it can serve the need of the deck, of the club members, club officers, and should be able to count as long as it also adheres to the standard that we present at our full officer training.
Okay, so you're saying as long as they get the equal training, the same number of courses and hours?
Not necessarily. I want the same results coming out of their training that we expect coming out of our club officer training. It's not necessarily about the making it a five-hour training at the club because that really would be difficult to or it'd be a lot to ask out of an area director. But there's minimums that we want out of the training at the club. It's not necessarily gonna be about how much time they put in. But we want, you know, we want those club officers to be as effective as the ones coming out of our full training.
Okay, and just a quick follow-up. Um it was a little too earlier that people identify the most value of that training is interacting with the other club officers that are getting the same training and experience. How can you duplicate that in a single club training environment?
It's very difficult. I don't think they get that the area director or the trainer, let's put it that way. The trainer cannot transfer all the knowledge that they bring to the table inside of a one, um even if it's an hour-long training. But they're gonna have to try and get as much as what we want them to know and what we want them to do after the training. Make them, make the club officers aware and motivate them to do that, those things. I even though the most valuable, the most popular, let's put it that way, the most popular part of the full club officer training is the peer review and peer uh
Engage.
Engagement. That's not always the most that the district wants out of the training. Because we what we really want is to get our um our, okay, in our priority list, it's more about making sure club payments are uh dues are paid on time. And that, you know, club officer list, a lot of that administrative stuff, educational awards are being pr- uh pursued and filed on time. Everything that goes into the DCP program is a priority. But in general, those are the best order of priority that we look at. And then uh everything beyond that is kind of like gravy. You know, making the club environment the most uh effective and most desirable is in there, but it's not always gonna be front and center.
Okay, you set them up, you know that, King. I have a really hard question I wasn't gonna ask.
Very, I can I ask a follow-up real quick?
Of course.
Okay, so here's why I brought up that question. Because and please, no one take offense, okay? I love you all. Okay. Um it's only because I heard that the way we've done things in the past is was wrong. And according to how I'm I'm perceiving how what TI says, it's not necessarily wrong because it's up to the program quality directive to determine what is right. So the reason I ask is sooner or later, I'm gonna be a deck uh a key three member, you know, hopefully. That's my goal. Uh not in the near, not in the near future.
It's all recording.
But I just, I just wanna be, I just wanna be um secure in knowing that what I feel is right for the district will be valued as as a good opinion and not trumped to say, no, you have to do it this way. So so I don't, I er I kinda got an idea of where you're heading as pure key to PQD. Uh but now I'll give Steve the hard question cause I know what he's thinking.
Actually, you don't.
Oh, okay.
As as of two hours ago, District Forty-nine has thirty-three clubs that are by TMI definitions failing or struggling clubs because they all need a coach. They all have less than twelve members. Thirty-two of those do not have a coach assigned. Do you think there's any relationship to the training we are providing and the fact that we have fifty percent of our clubs struggling and not surviving? What's the correlation that there has to be something that causes half our clubs to not do it?
I have an answer.
What answer?
Well, no, it's sweet. That's okay.
Oh, yeah, no, this is open and there's no way to be denied.
This is just only.
Forget you're in Hawaii, okay?
I have comments too.
Okay, but from what, okay, now that I've actually seen what Toastmasters like outside of our district, that number you cite is not that uncommon. Fifty percent or more struggling. The point that the problem that looks bad right now is because you're looking the day or week after club dues are due. And we have a lot of slacking um membership payments that are kind of making that number look a lot less.
Well, actually, that
But but yeah, I think.
we're still in the grace period, so all those are still good. It doesn't account for that.
Yeah.
Um well, I went through the list because I didn't know how many that we should be getting. And we're we're only about halfway
Yeah.
or the number of renewals are about half of what it should be. And by the end of next month, I kind of expect that number to be closer.
Right.
That's one we'll know for sure.
Yeah, the real struggling club, I expect it to be more like fifteen or more. But to get to your other question about why we can't get coaches for everyone, having gone and tried to recruit coaches for clubs now, I can tell you it's very difficult because there's a problem of matching a one person who's willing to be a coach versus what the availability is and whether they're gonna be a good match for that prospective club. It's not like I can just assign someone.
Hmm.
Um even though I could submit the paperwork and technically I could assign someone, that's not how it's gonna really work.
Actually, the question was more directed on the proactive side of that is what is causing the clubs to be in this position where they need a coach?
Yeah. Yeah. Where they need, where they're losing members.
Yeah, what what is it that, is there anything we could do?
I have my own answer.
Which answer?
That a focus or something that we could do for VP membership or VP Ed or is some area could we improve in any of those areas and maybe focus on a training in the TLI instead of do things that don't really relate to successful clubs? You you see anything we could do to, cause that's a significant problem. It bears directly on retention too.
Well, I have my own ideas about that, opinion. Just say this is my opinions. Um we know, well, I know for for through my experience that there are a lot of clubs that participate in a DCP. And I also know on the other hand, there's a lot of clubs that do not participate for whatever reason. They just wanna give a speech, give to be an evaluator. They just wanna have a social hour kind of thing. Uh I'm not saying of a lot of clubs, so a lot of the clubs are in that position. And what Kyle was saying, it is hard to find a club coaches. Because we were all on that. Because we were all on that step. We were once in Kyle's position. I was once in her position and then everyone is gonna come into my position, so I understand. When, when I was looking for club coaches, I looked for everyone who had their advanced leader bronze. And I would send a message to everyone or contact them. I might get three responses out of twenty or more possibly. And then a part of it is the clubs themselves. You might have a past district leader in there, possibly in a uh D T M, possibly. But you might have an experienced Toastmaster who'd been around for ten years. We don't need help. We're okay. So, so that's one of the things that um that we're up against. To see, to make them realize that this, someone else looking in with fresh new eyes can make a little suggestion. So one of the things that you might not know, I was actually the club coach for Lilio Kalani. And I think a couple of years.
He was coming one year.
Uh I mean, but for a few years, they were not a distinguished club.
Yeah, no.
Yes, no. But when I went in and I really didn't have to do much, cause it's all about getting the club members to to see the value and have them do basically the work and see the vision. But they went from not being a distinguished for maybe three years or so.
No, eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight years.
I was president the year that you were a club coach trainer.
Yeah. Oh, it was, I think it was select.
Yeah, because, because I was president the first year we were select.
But. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, she was a president.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they went from being not distinguished for eight years to being select.
Yeah.
And it wasn't me. I just helped them make this, these suggestions, give them vision, and they did all of the work.
So, well, so without, because we can't get coaches like you to do that, how do we get them that information or training
Yeah.
to the club officers so they can help them?
We, there is a, there is a manual um on club coaching. There is uh training information on the T I website that we could give, get to them.
Is there some way to do that?
Possibly.
I don't have to answer some of these.
Yeah, I don't know.
I see the question.
He's also.
I've, is there any thing I can add?
He's also, well, getting back to what I read his question was, how do you prevent the thirty to fifty percent fall off?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Fall off rate every time.
How do you help clubs not be struggling?
Yeah.
So. So they don't need a coach?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Well, um part of it is um not enabling them, it's also just empowering them. You know, so actually what Charles was kind of actually pretty good because um he empowered us and he also gave us suggestions without doing the work. You know, I've, I've been a club coach and I told you I was an awful club coach. So you also have to get someone good, so not me, right? But it was, um but what I learned from that is that because my strength is membership building. So I, I really bring in members to my club and so that was the one club while I was coaching, uh which is Queen's Medical Center. Is that I would recruit people, but that's the one club that I'm not allowed to recruit for because I have to work to get other members to be able to know how to do them. Otherwise, I'm sort of cutting off their legs. You know, they're not letting them do the work to get there and really empowering them to do that. And so um actually, it's more like, it is more like about fifteen, cause that's what it was last year too. And then I've had clubs tell me, no, they don't need a coach. So then it's creating value. Why, tell me why you need a coach? We have all these experienced members or we have an experienced member in our club that comes to it. He's not a member, but he always comes to our club and he, we're doing just fine. We'll get to there. And then I see for the two years, I'm like, oh, they haven't hit distinguished.
Okay, we can see we're not gonna get an answer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, they're.
Coaching thing, so let's go back to.
Oh, sorry.
Kane, oh no.
Cause we're gonna run out of time.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Kane.
No, what, the same question line or my answer to your question or?
Uh.
Yeah. There are like, there's the answers wrong for someone else.
Really? Yeah, yeah, I got, go ahead. You guys got a question?
Yeah, that's, the other's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do one question per person and then we'll come back and, and do more if we have time.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll be showing.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Go ahead.
Time, go ahead.
Yeah.
Just for you.
This is kind of for my benefit, I guess. It seems like many of the questions that I hear and that we've talked about tonight, we're recreating the wheel. And I'm not sure if this is really your responsibility, but we're a part of a much larger and international organization.
Hmm.
And we can't be the only district struggling with these types of things. Communication channels, um strong clubs, me- recruitment, uh getting people to volunteer, so.
Recruitment.
I'm puzzled, where, where's T M I in all this? What type of training or channels do the three of you have to work with your peers in this international organization?
We do have a um mid-year training and actually by the time we're elected, we have to wait three, I think it's about, well, one month? No, actually, three months because we, we're elected in May, then June, July, and August is our very first training. So during the first month of the technical um Toastmasters year, we may not exactly know where we need to be or what we need to do. And so it's, it's sort of like we kind of guide the incoming member and then we have mid-year training as well. But we have two trainings and then we have a call, I believe, monthly, I mean, yeah, it just seems to happen a lot, so it's in my schedule, but it's a monthly. And then with your peers in the region, then you, so there's five other districts in our region, Region Two. And then we go over just sort of the things that are challenges. And then we use those ideas and see if, if they fit what we kind of want our vision to go towards, then we use those in our district. But again, it's like, there's so many great ideas and it's like, almost like you can only do like half of them, not all of them. So you have to figure out what's the most important to your district and what you learned through all that process could help them. And you have to move like, it's not like you're moving one at a time, but it feels that way. You know, you're only doing one thing at a time, but you're not, you're doing several, but it just feels like it's moving slowly. Yeah.
So you are implementing the items that you learn from T M I?
Yes. Yeah.
You are implementing.
Yeah.
And to get back to her question, it's not a magic bullet. Uh all of our problems that we have in this district are also in other districts around the world and there are many other problems that may not apply to us, but. Yes, it, there are universal problems around communication, volunteering, team building, conflict management. All those things exist. There are, there are these attempts that come out of Toastmasters International and other, actually, we are actually reaching outside of just what comes out of the Toastmasters manual now for our problems. But, and there's no magic bullet come there, is what I want to say.
Hmm. Hmm.
But they are trying and they, they see the problems just like we do too. And it's, I guess, once you have the perspective from the key three where you're now comparing yourselves to all the other districts when we look at that dashboard and see that every other district is down in membership twenty percent or more. Yeah, we realize, yeah, th- these are worldwide patterns or not specific to us.
I, I also wanted to add to that, um I was having lunch with my dad and a prospective um member for the organization that he's a part of, which is the Boy Scouts of America. So he's on the Western Region Board. And so one of the things I learned by sitting in that conversation, even though I was thinking, what the heck am I doing here, I know that mean, you know, but I was connecting the two people. He had said in there that it's actually a universal problem for all organizations on membership. Because I think from the seventies, so I don't know where uh Toastmasters fits in exactly on that membership problem, but he said it's actually like a bell curve. And then it goes up and it starts to go down since the seventies. And I was shocked to hear that because I was like, the seventies, you know?
Technology was coming out today.
Oh, it's a long.
When the media boards were just getting, yeah, their feet.
Yeah. So it's a universal thing and one of the things I know that they're focusing on is social media. I don't know if that's um something that we could use too, but you find out where you get members from. So one of the areas, I'm just gonna use as an example, that Boy Scouts of America kind of gets members is uh women, because they're the moms. You know, they're apparently the ones to use Pinterest. And so then you have to figure out where do our members come from, like as far as social media, you know, is it Facebook? I'm, I'm sort of thinking it might not be, you know, and does T I have those stats? Like I always ask them for stats a lot. So it's sort of like using that to kind of figure out where we as a district could focus on to find our members.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add on what Kyle and Karan says. So one of the things that I see is that Toastmasters. We're a full-time organization run on a part-time.
Which is not actually a stand.
Right? We're doing forty, fifty, sixty hours with ten hours, with five hours, with maybe twenty hours. And that's, we're part of the uh, the challenges line.
Okay, what do you guys have? You gonna give a softball or a hardball?
Uh, it's not that bad. Um but as far as motivating uh members and leaders, I know that's always a, a challenge and everyone has different motivations for being in Toastmasters and some people motivated by recognition, some people are motivated by um incentives, uh you know, physical incentives. I- is there any way that the, the district can, you know, and I know that funds are limited, you know, and we've always sticked to that
um reason for not providing, you know, say incentives, but is there any way to, that the organization or the district can raise money
to, so that we can provide um, you know, incentives, you know, especially for, you know, maybe a distinguished club aside, you know, ribbons are good and certificates are good, you know, but having something physical or monetary incentives, even for maybe a speech contest or even
Hmm.
just something, you know, is there, I know s- there was some talk before about having, I don't know if this is related to raising money, but like sponsors or something? I don't, I don't, I don't know.
But is there any way that that's, is, is T I allowed? I mean, are we bound by?
Hardball.
Yeah.
Yes, sponsorship or fundraising in general is allowed. There are specific rules because uh Toastmasters is a five oh one C three. The specific difficulty with us is that uh any fundraising activity has to be centered around education. Because Toastmasters is an education, educational five oh one C three, not a charity, not a service organization, not a political, I don't know. So that's why it's only been a matter, we've only done, you know, silent auction. That's pretty much been our only fundraising in the past.
Okay.
So whether you're, but you're, if you're asking about what can we do to incentivize things, we do have a set of programs and they're very, in dollar terms, they're very limited. Because one, there, there's a rule in, in all the books that says you cannot award more than twenty-five dollars to an individual. And even, even then, we're not really encouraged to, to um incentivize individual performance more along, more along lines of club performance.
Yeah.
So that's the short answers for why we can't do anything extravagant.
And, and I'd like to add on to that and one of the other things of T I policy is that if there is a, a sponsorship or a fundraising per se, for lack of a better word, it has to benefit the district, not the member, the individual, you know, like if they were going to speech contests or the individual club or the area or the business, it has to benefit the, the district. So that um.
That's why we can't pay to send winners to.
Yes, yes. At one time before, yes, District Forty-nine was allowed to do that back in the days. But now currently, we're, we're not able to do that, so.
Okay, let's uh move on to Mary. Are you out there, Mary?
Hi, Mary. What about Elliot?
Elliot?
Is anyone there? Crickets. Okay.
No, it's, I think I put, is it on me?
I tested it before. I haven't heard.
Oh.
Do I really see on the?
Is that full?
Yeah.
Oh, you turned it off?
Yeah, I turned it on, did the mic on the computer.
I think they disconnected. I don't see them.
Okay.
I'm on.
Okay.
All right.
Chini's.
Chini? What you got, or the top three?
I have a very busy schedule. I have a lot of things going on, a lot of things that are vying for my time. And I know that you touched on it earlier, but tell me why Toastmasters should be a priority to me? Why I would want to invest as a leader in Toastmasters?
Well, I guess I'll answer that. Um it, I believe Bobby Crobio says it best, um like I don't know if this is his, but anyway, let us say it. So, so he says that Toastmasters is something that you do for yourself, you know, and I really find that true. You know, because there's a lot of, and you, you're an international winner, you know, for um insurance or the speech contest. And so it's something that you do for yourself for growth, but it's not like something that you'll notice as a big impact. I mean, you'll see the results of your life, but it's more of a daily thing. You know, I, there's a lot of, see, I have a lot of units in mind, so I, I've been to my Toastmasters meetings, I don't even use that as an excuse. But I haven't been at my Toastmasters meeting, but I use it for practice so that I come across, I can speak better and so that I can also lead better. So everything that I do for Toastmasters has helped me in so many aspects of my life that it's hard to say where I learned that from because it's the daily practice. And so because it's so small, the daily changes that happen in my life, you may, you may or may not find value. But when you see the results that happen, then it's, it's sort of like exercise. I mean, I know it's compared to exercise a lot, but when I exercised one time, I'm like, hmm, didn't notice a difference. You know, so then I stop, like I stop. There's no need for me to go. But my friends continue. They continue. I'm like, wow, you look so good. And it's because they go like three times a week. You know, or actually, I think my friends actually go more, which, that's, you know, other things, right? But they, they do it a lot and then it's like, wow, the results are so awesome. Like it just, I mean, I like poked my friend the other day and it was like solid. And I'm like, well, that's what Toastmasters is. When you practice and you do all those things, you're just a solid person. You're a solid human being, you're a solid speaker, you're a solid leader. And so that's sort of what I would say to inspire you to be motivated to participate more. Because I have a super busy schedule. And again, Toastmasters touched my heart when they asked for a hand and so somehow I'm here. And I'm very confused sometimes as to why I'm here, but you know, I have never regretted that decision. Like I can definitely say that. It gets hard at times, it's not easy, but change, positive change and growth is hard. And if you're not growing, you're decaying. And I choose growth, right?
So what you're really saying is that being in Toastmaster leadership would really be beneficial to me, not necessarily to the district, but in person?
To you.
In person.
Yeah.
We win by you winning.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a collection of everybody winning. Yeah, there's no way that the district can succeed without the individual success.
Okay. Let's go, Catherine. What do you got?
Okay.
Good.
The three of you are in leadership positions. In order to get there, you had to go through training on the mainland. How to be leaders. What I see happening. Karan is leading. The two of you have your jobs. How do you feel when Karan is doing everything?
What makes you a good team where everybody has their assigned role and does it and the others recognize that and support it? How do you build into that type of a cohesive leadership team? Is that kind of what you're gonna?
Now, I'm not picking on Karan. I'm not telling her that, hey, you're, you're out of bounds, kiddo. No, she's just ambitious. She's got a lot of goals and drive.
I, I think um, I, I agree with, with what you said. I think I'm one that likes to um have a input from each of the members. You know, I'm not one of those that, that say, okay, I'm a district director and this is what we're gonna do A, B, and C, and if you don't like it, next. You know?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I like to get input. And, and part of it, part of it too, um Catherine, is that this is a leadership organization. So I have to be able to allow this person to grow in her leadership role. However, right, with some guidance. And I have to be here to allow Kyle to grow in his leadership role without stunting them. You know, I'm here to guide them, to help them.
Okay.
Then there's also um.
But I see her doing everything.
But isn't it just because Karan might be more vocal?
Yeah, she's more uh on the outside.
All right, another thing.
Sure, she's what we see.
Yeah.
There has been a lot of discussion this year, a lot of discussion that goes on behind the scenes that everyone else doesn't see.
Hmm.
There's, there's a lot, I'm sorry, I just wanna add to that. There's just a lot of things that um like Charles was saying, behind the scenes, like conflict resolution, that is one of the main jobs that they actually say is for the district director. Uh I only know that because they're grooming us to be conflict resolution people. You know, they want us to be on target to understand that that's gonna be a major part of our job. And so a lot of the things that have happened on behind the scenes is we always discuss who's gonna answer what question, you know, and sometimes we already know. So then that person just answers anyway, because if it's a club growth question, then Kyle answers it. If it's regarded to my job, then I answer it. And if it's Charles' job, um he answers it. And then actually, like if I am seeming like I'm, you know, doing everything, then that's, I, I have to learn to uh make sure that I'm only doing my job. So that's part of all of our learning process, right? And um, yeah, but I am a little bit motivated, yeah.
I think what we're looking at is a clear definition of what each of your roles are, so the district understands what your role is. You discuss among yourselves who's gonna answer questions, you know, makes sense, the areas of expertise. But it's important. But it's important for the district to see the figurehead
Hmm.
that alright, this is the leadership team. We work together. And I think that's where we're getting at, and she was just looking for some way you guys figured that out, but um that could take hours, so let's run back to Terry.
Okay. Um one of the frustrations that I have heard is why do we have such a push to get new members when we have so many failing or weak clubs? It seems as if we so one of the questions is, well, is TMI pushing that? Are we pushing so hard to be a distinguished or president select distinguished district that we are failing to serve our members? And have you guys talked about that? Uh could there be more communication with the membership to let us know what your priorities are? And have we taken a look at
Mm-hmm.
trying to find more volunteers or people to help with the uh failing clubs?
That's a question.
As opposed to having them out there building new clubs? Cause it seems that we get these new clubs up, but then it won't be long before they're gonna be failing.
Not to say, yeah, a three-year bet.
Yeah.
Well, uh uh actually I have something about that. It's not a Toastmasters thing, it's Charles' opinion.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the DCP, there's two points in there that are dedicated to gaining four new members, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the the requirements that TI has passed on for us to become a distinguished um
Two percent?
Three.
Three percent.
A a distinguished district or above its
Sure. Two percent.
club growth and it's also starting new clubs. So you can all you can see it right there that is that it's pretty much a Toastmasters um.
But those are actually two different things, because you can have everybody in your club quit, sign up eight members, and still get your two points and have a net loss of four members.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah.
But the gain on clubs, or those ones that are lost are subtracted from your total, you've gotta have a net gain.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And I I think she's got a good question. That was that was actually one of my listeners.
Yeah, mine too.
Yeah, that that is a big question is can't we put more of a push or do you see
Balance.
value of balancing our efforts? Because when we put two mentors and two sponsors on a new club, that's four clubs that didn't get a coach.
We definitely should.
You get the same credit towards DTM, and you've now got four clubs that don't get the benefit of those experience Toastmasters.
Okay, the one thing you probably all haven't seen is that most people are more effective at building new clubs than re- and than propping up a a failing club. It's well, one to answer your first first question, yes, TI is driven towards growth. That's one of their big things that they are pushing down. That's why the whole DCP is structured the way it is. So we're on board with that program, so we don't uh
Question.
we don't question that their ultimate goal, but questions whether we should get there by by retaining members or by growing new members. It always ends up being more effective to put our efforts into growing new members because that we yield better results.
Hmm.
We found.
Interesting.
I mean, how many years did we go through with very minimal club growth and we never got distinguished? And the one year we chartered five clubs is the year we got distinguished. That's kind of the bottom line of how we look at it.
I think I think that's the philosophy she's asking. Is our reason to exist to get distinguished or is it to train communicators and leaders?
I I not that we're. Yeah.
Because those are mutually exclusive, the way this is set up for training.
Yeah. Yeah. I know, and I agree. I
Well, it's for members and much for the district.
But as I mean, as uh my role within the Toastmasters organization is to push their agenda first, and I see what their what their desires are and what they want out of their program, I have to put their their wants ahead of what I would want.
Hmm.
Because I agree with you that I would in my vision of what I would like Toastmasters to be or our district is I would like to see our members be able to show us what they've taken out of Toastmasters, apply to their life refreshly or personally,
Right.
and show that as like uh a requirement to get their DTM, you know?
Hmm.
That's something that I would like to see instead of these awards that would have been panning on. But I I know that's never gonna fly.
Do you don't you think that would help us retention though? The people get value out of Toastmasters?
Yeah.
Yes, and it took that for me, it took over a year to get to that point.
Hmm.
It's uh a lot of people.
And we need so many new clubs, 'cause we won't be losing them. I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but the the thing that really surprised me that was the year we lost the club that had like fourteen members. We just turned in their this is the under charter. I mean, it's not that twelve number is not magic. It's there's things that could, you know, kill a club without just one number.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
A couple, yeah.
Okay, Don, did you have another question?
Uh I have I I just wanted to add to that. I don't know if everybody realizes this, but we're one of the very few districts that doesn't lose a ton of clubs. You know, so that's we really work hard to see if we can keep them, but sometimes it's the members that really don't care. And then it's that sort of the apathy that we have to overcome, and if we determine that it's too much, like as far as um it's far gone because nobody wants to, nobody wants the club anymore. We can't want it enough for them to work. And so that's when we lose the club, yeah.
Don't work. Right.
Hmm.
Actually, throughout the discussion, you guys have um answered my uh other questions, so I'm interested in time on like others.
Okay.
Just real quick, it's more of a fun question. I'll ask you to give me a number, each a number, okay?
Okay.
What is the top number you think we can get at a district conference?
Are we counting both the book like book these combined or just just Saturday?
I I'm talking now.
Yes, right now. Uh just top. Doesn't matter now, five years from now, ten years from now?
Oh.
Well.
Yeah, I think it's just in Saturday, so uh yeah.
That ultimately, yeah. You mean even in the future, where where you're gonna be at?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thinking uh no, I think we should be able to roll over two hundred if we do.
Okay. So.
I I thought two hundred.
Okay.
Me too, two hundred, yeah.
Okay, two hundred, okay.
Yeah.
That's nice to know. That's all.
Yeah.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
You wanna know one, Catherine?
Yeah, I do.
Easy one.
Well, earlier you mentioned that people want it's hard to get people to step up, to volunteer, to to work towards their own leadership. Like she was saying she's really busy and why what's in it, why should I do it? Why 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 do it? What do you do? What can you do when nobody will volunteer? What do you guys do?
We've been scrambling amongst the people that we can count on, and a lot that's what it's what we've had in doing.
I think, yes.
I mean, incrementally, we'll uh we find people that are reliable, that are interested and engaged. We make sure to nurture them as much as we can. But we can't or at least we're not counting on getting a whole like a whole board of new volunteers at every opportunity.
Okay. Do you think it would be a good thing to look at ways to encourage people to want to step forward and help? Um another thing is, do you treat everybody the same?
I try to, yes.
Do you treat all members the same? The beginning, the the person who's been in it for a few years and those who've been in it for a long time, or is there favoritism being shown?
Well, one of the things I try to do is like um is probably a little bit of what Karan does. You you wanna plant seeds. So one of the things that I do when I go to the conference or to the contest, I try and meet all the new people, but at the same time, I try to say hello to everyone in the room. Possibly, sometimes I can, 'cause as a district director, I've been, you know, a lot of people wants to pull my ear, hey, what about this, what about that? So that's one of the things I try to do. And then I'm and then I plant the seed. Wow, that was a great uh presentation. Wow, you you're here, this is your first time. Or maybe you could be a club uh club officer one day. And then if they've been around for a li- a little while, oh, I think you would make a great area director. So it's just about planting those seeds.
Well, one of the things that we could do, um since everything is duplicatable, like everything that we've talked about in here and things that we've learned from other districts across the world, um one thing that I feel that we could do is that right now we plant seeds, but we could also encourage other district officers or past district officers to also do that. You know, some people do it on their own, like Anne and Frank are good examples. They plant seeds in everyone, you know, and it's you don't know which one's gonna hit, right? So we I believe I I treat everybody the same, 'cause I can only speak for myself, um but I make a beeline for somebody I've never met, you know, so in some ways
Yes, yes.
I I don't, but I say hi to everyone equally. And of course, you know, it's it's sort of like I make a point, especially the people who may not know me that well or maybe have concerns or irritated with me, I always give them a smile and I always hope that one day we could have a better relationship.
Yes, yes. Yes.
But as far as the new members, I think if it's their first time they're at a district event, I want it to be a good one. You know, so it's like we kind of spread it around, but at the same time, I need to meet people that I've never met before, because who knows where our next leaders are gonna come from?
Yes.
And the fact that they showed up means they're interested.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and and uh yes, I agree. It is us as leaders, but you one of the things that I don't like to see in my club
Yeah.
is that when we have a new member and at the end of the meeting, all of the regular members will talk to each other and then not talk to that new member. So it's the club officer's job, but it's all of the members putting that onto the district.
Hmm.
It's our leader's job, but it's also everyone's job here. If you see a new person that comes in, go up and talk to them, right? We need more, we need more worker bees out there. So that's what we can do as Toastmasters, because that is what we're supposed to do. And that's one of the moments of truth. Is our organization, our club welcoming our our guests. That's one of the things that all of our members should be doing as well.
One of my favorite um experiences that just happened was like I believe at the second club officer's training for the winter, there was a new member from one of the clubs that I belong to who came to the training because they threw it out to the entire district. So every member got an email from me, because I'm hoping that whether they're a club officer or not, they'll attend it because they see value. So this particular member came, she's not a district or she's not a club officer, but one day maybe she will be. And she asks me which one she should go to, because she's not an officer. So I started my normal thing where I said, well, I started off as fashion and arms, then I was like VP membership, VP PR. And then I was like, why am I talking about this? Because maybe she might enjoy the president. So I said, you know what? Why don't you take a look at the president's training? And then when I looked back at all of, because I have to give everyone credit, I saw that she had gone to the president's training. So it's not like it has to be a particular order. You know, she already had a lot of leadership skills and it's identifying those leaders and specifically telling them that you see something in them. And we as members of our district four District forty nine are all leaders, so we need to find other leaders and build them up. Whether we're district officers by title, but we're all leaders to be able to do that for someone else. And that's where I think the true meaning of where leaders are made is.
Okay.
I also think that the eighty twenty rule comes into play, right?
Yeah.
Twenty percent of the people are going to do eighty percent of the work or gonna wanna volunteer to do the work, so.
Yeah.
Okay, before we close up, do you have any other burning questions, something we wanna discuss with your leaders while they're all here in one room?
Kena's burning question.
It's not. Do you think it's possible to hold an Outer Island District Conference?
To what?
Outer Island District, Neighbor Island District Conference.
I I actually have an answer to that question, but I'll because I somebody had asked me that earlier.
I'd like to hear it.
I'd like to do this district do it.
I I like the.
I I think it's very possible in a in a near future.
Yeah.
Um
Okay.
And one of the reasons why we always have the district conferences here is because ninety percent of our clubs, about ninety-five percent of our clubs are on this island.
Right.
So that's mean that the population, the Toastmasters population is here.
Right.
So
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm that that's gonna be the case, but yes, in the future, I would like to see the district conference be held in one of the the neighbor islands.
Yeah, so that's very similar to my answer, but but I do um I do believe like if we were to grow the Big Island, 'cause I think it had come up, the Big Island in particular. I do feel that if we grow it, I mean, if it was like twenty clubs, I think that's significant enough to warrant us being able to have a district conference there. But for five clubs, while it's not, that's no small feat already, it's still um the majority of the membership is on Oahu.
No. No. It's not ideal.
Yeah, and so it's it's sort of like putting hardship on your your hu- yeah, on the fifty percent.
Mm-hmm. Ninety percent.
You know, but if if there was like twenty clubs, which is not impossible, you know, it means more work on people, great people like Mary, but it's it's not impossible. It can be done.
Hmm.
And it's sort of like actually somebody when I stepped up to this said, this story of the bumblebee, I'm gonna totally put your head. But it's basically that the bumblebee never knew that it couldn't fly, because you know, it has a big body and tiny legs.
Really?
Hmm.
So hopefully, like we can see twenty twenty new clubs on the Big Island. And then I would I would gladly pay to have a district conference there, you know?
Okay, since Catherine?
The upcoming conference. I have a request, and I know the district can afford it. I would like to see papers on everybody who has paid to enter into to go to the conference. What is discussed in the business meeting. And I would even like to have in advance warning of what we're saying yay or nay to.
Yeah, in the beginning.
I agree with those things.
Is it possible to have an agenda of what is going to be voted on in the short form? It's kind of those we get for general managers.
Like one page or something?
Yeah, so one page, this is what the business meeting is, this is what we're gonna vote on, that kind of thing.
Actually, I have to discuss that. We have to discuss that.
Yeah, they have to know what they're voting on. That is logical. It's just a methodology of giving and acting.
And you meant say the en- the entire um people that are there or the people who are actually voting?
Well, they're voting delegates, the ones either that have the proxy, certain delegates, the people that vote should know what they're voting on.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
They were actually sent that by the the administrative um manager?
Well, yeah, but they go to the club presidents who may or may not forward, who may or may not even open it, especially Hispanic.
Mm-hmm.
So there really is
So perhaps if.
if it's a printing thing and we need the district needs to spend twenty-two dollars to have four hundred copies printed, it's not. It 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 would make sense for them when they registered to vote and get their proxy at the table, here's what we're voting on.
Okay.
That's out of the system to make sense. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, people need to know.
Yeah. Whatever you come up with is logical. Okay, we've covered questions a lot. Let's wrap up with no more than two minutes, table topics from each of you. We'll start with Kyle and we'll end with the delegate.
On any other topics?
Table topics, anything you wanna say about the format tonight, the town hall, the future, Star Wars?
You you some?
Hmm. About the town hall, I think this would be valuable like it is now, one month prior to a uh district conference. A lot of the things that that ended up coming out at the last district conference, if we could have done this a month before the following, I think we could have headed off some uh the conflict there. And going forward, I think it would be valuable just to twice a year, one month before the business meeting. Uh I think we should also probably do this more online, because honestly, there's more people here that are
Hmm.
Yeah.
not gonna be able to do this in person. I mean, so you had technical difficulties, but if we set it up for us to make it work online, then I'm sure we could make it work.
So we should. That makes sense, and just broadcast the link so, hey, everybody, here's the town hall, log in if you wanna.
Yeah. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
They could actually put in questions that way, right? I mean, Charlie?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wanna go to me, yeah.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, I like that. That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
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 Karan, you can.
Okay.
I don't.
You can take this whole two minutes.
He already he raises it.
You're timed for two hours.
Well, um I'm actually really excited how this all happened. Like I loved I loved all of the questions, even though they were tough, because I really truly believe that what I ideally would like is trust within the district. Because if there's no trust, then we're not able to really, everybody's not really able to work together. You know, we're not i- i- being by title, we are the leaders, you know, but it's all of us working together to have something great, greater than ourselves. And it's I I was actually afraid how this is gonna go, but I was so excited, because I feel like a lot of that stuff is what all of our members wanna know. You know, and I feel it's very pertinent and I wasn't sure, because you don't have any like truly new members here, but I think some of you put yourself in their shoes. And I thought that was um really admirable and I'm glad that we did this. It was a test to see how it would go. And I think we can, like Kyle said, broadcast it and be able to have people come, and then maybe I can get a bigger room. And then there could be a certain number of seats available that people can actually attend in person, and then people across the district could see the whole thing. And I'm excited, because I think it actually will work, yeah.
Thank you, Karan.
Carol, Susan, Karan.
I I agree with both of them. I think that this was a very productive um two hours for me. Very productive, great idea. I would like to see it done at the beginning of the year, maybe in July or August, at the very beginning. Because if we're gonna implement things, we need to start it, plan it at the early stages instead of waiting halfway or a couple months in. Because at the beginning is when the key three and the district director is starting to do their um district success plan, their budget, right? Uh one of the things that is difficult is along the way, when there's ideas, can we do this? I'm sorry, our budget is already in place. So if we had something like this at the beginning of the year where our members could voice their questions, and by the way, you had all great questions, thank you. And I I appreciate you for um moderating. You you did a wonderful job. And um yes, so we should.
Can I be the next moderator?
Sorry, we already got one. You you gotta um you gotta put in for. So again, I would like to thank everyone for being here. I like to thank you for your questions and I like to thank Steve for moderating.
I'll thank you for taking the time out. This is and I'm glad we recorded this. Hopefully, we can maybe edit it down to fifteen minute blocks or however you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Maybe put them on the website, that we've got some videos.
Okay.
So people can see it and understand and get them excited about participating in the next one, either virtually or in person.
Mm-hmm.
I think this was great. Thank you.
This uh the town hall meeting could actually be someone's HBO. It does correct me.